Welcome to the Wednesday, October 1st, 2025, meeting of the Cluster Conservation Commission. The time is just after 5:30. Start with a roll call of commissioners. Cook.
Here.
For Sergeant.
Here.
For Terry.
Here.
And Member Jackson.
Yes, here.
Have a quorum.
All right, I go. Okay, first, agenda item is administrative briefing. Do you have anything?
We did have a couple continuations that were not reflected on the revised agenda. The first is NOI 0283020 for Two High Rock Terrace. They've requested to continue to 1015, 2025. And the second is NOI 0283076 for 40 or 81 Western Avenue. They have also requested to continue to 1015, 2025.
I will close the administrative briefing and we will open public comments. These are comments from the public on matters that are not on the agenda tonight.
We have no hands up on the Zoom.
Would I say something, please, before you close it? If not as a member of the public, I just think we ought to take note of Jane Goodall's passing. She contributed a great amount to our knowledge of animals, which is a little bit wildlife, which is under our purview as well. I just wanted to make note of that.
Great, great loss for the conservation community.
Yes.
Closing public comments. Now we go to minutes review and approval. Minutes for the meeting of September 17th, 2025. Your motion?
Commissioner Jackson moves to approve the minutes of September 17th, 2025, as amended.
Commissioner Cook, seconds.
Well, Member Cook.
Yes.
Yes, Member Terry.
Yes.
And Member Jackson.
Yes.
Now on to continued business. Several items are previously continued. Run through them quickly. The first is notice of intent 0282976 at 171 and 281 R Magnolia Avenue. Applicant is How Mag LLC. Previously continued to October 15th, 2025. I read the full description or just. Second item, notice of intent 0283006 at 105 Winger Sheik Road. Applicant is 125 Winger Sheik LLC. This was previously continued to October 15th, 25. Third item, notice of intent 0283007 at 107 Winger Sheik Road. Applicant is also 125 Winger Sheik LLC. This was also previously continued to the medium. 25. Fourth item is notice of intent 0283036 at 36 and 7 Welsh Lane and R Woodman Street. Applicant is RDL Welsh Lane LLC. This was previously continued to October 15th, 2025. Next item is notice of intent 0283077 at 37 Massasoan Road. Applicant is Daniel Fonzie. This was previously continued to October 15th, 2025. Item notice of intent 0283080 at 598 and 600 Essex Avenue. Michael Oliver, applicant. Previously continued to October 15th, 2025. That concludes the previously continued items for now. Next item is request for determination of applicability. 1835 at 32 St. Anthony's Lane. Applicant is Sarah Kearns for an after the fact approval for a driveway expansion in buffer zone bordering vegetated wetlands. Sarah Kearns represented.
We're supposed to say something?
Yeah.
We'll open the public hearing. I think we'll hear from the applicant first if she has anything to say.
Yeah. Well, Sarah's my daughter. We all live at 32 St. Anthony's Lane.
Okay.
We all own the house.
This is Barbara.
Say your name for the record.
Barbara Chanty.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Barbara. Yes, Barbara Chanty, 32 St. Anthony's Lane. And my husband, Robert. And my daughter, Sarah. We all live there. And I think I sent some material to you to include in this meeting. Some pictures of our driveway and our plan of action. As I mentioned in the email, I, we did not realize, we thought the wetlands was across the street, which we don't touch. And when we needed to expand our driveway, I didn't know we had to get approval. And we're sorry, we didn't know that and if it caused any problems, but since then, we've come up with an action plan where the driveway is 22 feet up this way and there's seven feet of buffer before the gully. And we would, if there's a question on drainage, we would rake that seven feet down a little bit. So any runoff would run into the gully and plant grass. And we bought four holly bushes, which grow eight feet by 10 feet. Plant along the gully to secure any loose soil, so we don't feel there'd be any runoff. And we haven't done anything since we got your approval to do that. So if it meets with your approval, we're willing to do that.
Thank you. I will open up for public comment. Any members of the public who have question or comments on this matter, please raise your hands. One audience member. Say your name.
Frank Orton. I'm 34 St. Anthony's Lane. And most of the culvert is on my property. So the problem is multiple times the Conservation Commission board met. There have to be trees in the culvert, not outside of the culvert to slow the runoff border down. 20 years ago, I planted trees in the culvert. Then their husband, he got a new chainsaw and he wanted to play around and he cut some of the trees. No big deal. But the border then shoots, especially in the springtime in March. This border and it just runs down in the culvert. And the border don't slow down. That's what's the problem. The other problem is they don't know whether the property line is, and the property line is 20 foot from the foundation, not 22 or 23 or whatever. But so easement, there's an easement, or there's 15 foot from the property line. There was property, 15 foot to our side. And an easement can be changed. I couldn't change it. Or can they can change it? Or try to change it. It's a needed private easement. It's not a public easement. And that's it in principle. And I'm afraid from their built up soil, everything pours into the culvert and I'm the one wants to clean it out. And I'm, I'm sick. I cleaned already the garbage out with every Monday is there. I had it. That's, that's all I can say. And so that's actually law, if you want to hear it, that you can change the recorded easement.
Right. I mean, the easement issue is not really our concern. Our concern is the wetlands and any soil that's running into the swell that might go into the wetlands. That's our concern. The easement is not really an issue that we deal with. That's an issue between.
Done from the city and the planning board and it's recorded. And no Conservation Commission can approve something what is on this easement since the easement connects to wetlands. A wetland from Gilbert Hold, as the culvert connects the wetlands on Gilbert Hold and it goes all the way down to St. Anthony's Lane and then all the way to the Atlantic.
Right. I understand that, but again, it's a planning board matter about, you know, what the easement is or drainage or anything about the approval that's needed. The easement itself is a matter between the two parties that doesn't concern us. Right, but that's not our concern. As Conservation Convention, our concern is the wetland across the street and the soil that might be getting into it. So I think we, the concerns that we discussed at the last meeting was the issue was basically the soil, loose soil and runoff from the property. So without that, I think, I guess, before we go into roll call comments, I'll close out the public comments or ask if there's any more public comments.
You have nobody on the Zoom. Andres.
Let's go to Cook.
I just wanted to say I selected the holly bushes because they told me they have deeper out roots and they spread, so that would secure the, any runoff.
I also like to say that we offered for anyone to come up there and just tell us what to do and we would comply completely.
Yeah.
You know, it was on us that we did not get a variance to do so because we weren't aware of it. But other than that, you know, we're, we would do anything necessary. No.
All right, let's hear from the commissioners.
Member Cook.
You have to give me a bit, Bill.
I actually took a ride up there to take a look at it. And where the work was done next, adjacent to the culvert, there was absolutely no indication of any of the sediment from there having come in because it's thickly rooted along the sides of it. And it was actually, it was dry, but there was no indication of any of that sediment going in there. So I think, I was going to suggest just planting bushes along the fence along there, just so we get some roots established. And I, the holly bushes would be fine with me.
Sergeant.
Yes. I, I agree with that the holly bushes would be a good addition, like a two year monitoring mortality of the, the company of those holly bushes.
I, I'm fine with the holly bushes. If my only concern is whether they're native, I'm not sure if they're native. I think they're not. He might help than I would.
You figure.
I'd like to see an additional mulch sock that runs along, basically along the fence. Just to capture any kind of surface runoff that might be from the soil. A mulch sock, it's basically like a kind of a netting that gets mostly filled with mulch.
Mulch.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, just as an extra sort of sedimentation control or any kind of, if it, we haven't had any rain, really strong rains for a while, but if any rain hits loose soil, it could runoff in there, but the mulch sock is intended to sort of capture that. And also, I don't know if you could, I mean, the bushes are nice, but I think there's a larger area of disturbed soil than that the bushes cover. So in before, you know, it's going to take time for the bushes to grow. I'd like to see some sort of grass or conservation seed mix that can fill up that area.
Yeah, we'd be happy to do that.
Continuing condition to maintain the vegetated buffer. In this condition.
Member Jackson.
Yeah, I think one of the questions is whether this project would have been permissible had they come to us in the first place. And I think it would have been, and I think the current proposal for mitigation is appropriate. I would go along with Mr. Viteri's suggestion of additional planting of grass or meadow mix or something to kind of fill in while the holly bushes take root and take, start growing.
I have one question.
Yes.
You guys come over and dig out the culvert, right? And that's all.
We don't.
Somebody has to, I don't touch it anymore. I had enough of that.
Well, again, that's an issue between you and the neighbors. It's not our concern. Our concern is the wetlands across the street.
Can I just say something? There has never, ever been any trash in the culvert whatsoever.
Oh.
Not, yeah, not.
This is again, not an issue.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah.
We're happy to do all the recommendations. Thank you very much.
Make a mention.
Hey, Commissioner, are we done here?
Can we have a motion to close the hearing?
Yeah, Commissioner Jackson moves to close the public hearing for RDA 1835 at 32 St. Anthony's Lane.
Commissioner Cook, seconds.
Member Cook.
Yes.
Yes.
Member Terry.
Yes.
Member Jackson.
Yes. Commissioner Jackson moves to approve the project. News for a negative determination for RDA 1835 at 32 St. Anthony's Lane with the conditions as previously mentioned.
Commissioner Cook, seconds.
Roll call, Member Cook.
Yes.
Yes.
Member Terry.
Yes.
Member Jackson.
Yes.
Encourage the neighbors to work them on themselves about maintenance of the easement area.
Absolutely. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next case of continued business.
Case.
Next. Next item on the agenda. Notice intent 0283020 at Two High Rock Terrace.
Commissioner Jackson moves to continue. 0283020 at Two High Rock Terrace to the Conservation Commission meeting of October 15th.
Commissioner Cook, seconds.
Oh, Member Cook.
Yes.
Yes, Member Terry.
Yes.
And Member Jackson.
Yes.
Next item is notice intent 0283076 at 41 Western Avenue. Trustees of reservations applicant.
Oops, sorry. I think I stepped on you before, Peter. Commissioner Jackson moves to continue NOI 0283076 at 481 Western Avenue to the Conservation Commission meeting of October 15th, 2025.
Commissioner Cook, seconds.
Oh, Member Cook.
Yes.
Sergeant.
Yes.
Member Terry.
Yes.
And Member Jackson.
Yes.
Last item of continued business is notice of intent 0283089 at 29 River Road. Deborah, Michelle and Pamela Curtis, applicants. This, they, applicants have requested to continue to October 15th, 2025.
Yeah, Commissioner Jackson moves to continue NOI 0283089 at 29, are we on, no, I'm sorry. 3076 at 481 Western Avenue to the Conservation Commission of October 15th. Was I wrong? River Road?
River Road.
River Road, I'm sorry. 3089 at 29 River Road to the Conservation Commission meeting of October 15th.
Commissioner Cook, seconds.
Call Member Cook.
Yes.
Sergeant.
Yes.
Member Terry.
Yes.
And Member Jackson.
Yes.
Hey, moving to new business. Hearing for.
Yep.
Okay, we're going to hear two items out of order due to the representative having to attend another meeting. The first, and we're getting them both at the same time?
I believe so. They're, actually, I'll pull bill up.
Okay.
They did both receive DEP numbers today. The first is 0283093 and that's for 448 Washington. And 0283092 for 48 rear.
All right, hey, first of all, Bill Manuel from Wetlands and Land Management, and I thank you very much for taking me out of order. I apologize to the folks that are behind on the agenda.
Sorry, Bill, before you begin, do you want to hear both items at the same time?
Yes, I do. It's the best way to present this project.
Okay, let me, let me call both of them and open the hearing. So the two items that'll be heard at the same time, the first is notice of intent 0283092 at 448 R Washington Street. The applicant is Ross Varney. Raise and rebuild a single family home in riverfront area, land subject to coastal storm flowage and buffer zone to coastal resource areas. Bill Manuel from Wetlands and Land Management, Inc., representing. Second matter is notice of intent 0283093 at 448 Washington Street. Also applicant Ross Varney, this is a driveway expansion and retaining wall in riverfront area. Bill Manuel from Wetlands and Land Management.
All right, so I'll share my screen and you'll see why these are being discussed simultaneously. So just for, I, I got it zoomed out a little bit here. The Washington Street is over here on this side of the property. And a river is over here with its offshore riparian resource areas. This is the, this in the magenta is the Varneys seasonal cottage. There's, I saw them, they're sitting there in the front row, attending the hearing in person. And they've owned this property for about 95 years in their family. And for 95 years, there is a driveway easement that crosses 448 up in front. And they've been parking their cars up here and walking down a path, walking down some steps down to the cottage. And everything they've ever brought in there and taken out has been hand carried. Now they're aging, they're looking at retirement. The family is looking at converting the cottage to a permanent residence for Ross and Lynn. They looked at rehabilitating the existing structure here, which is again outlined in magenta. I'll, I'll zoom in here a little bit. But as a seasonal, 95 year old plus seasonal cottage, there's nothing here to rehabilitate. So plus it's, it's fully half of it's in the flood zone. So they would have had to have relocated the structure anyway. So that's what they did in the, the new proposal. This is in the, the riverfront area to the Mill River. It, areas on the property are previously degraded, so we have to look at this under 1058 five. And this is probably the most complicated redevelopment project I've had to deal with since we started looking at these differently. The property, the 448 rear is only 7700 square feet, 77 and 10 square feet. What we need to do is, is rebuild a home. It's a modest sized structure, only 986 square foot footprint. It will be multi-leveled to work with the topography. The driveway, including that on 448, bringing in there, you know, so we can get access down into the property. That eats up a lot of the lot. And this is a 10 scale plan, so the lot isn't very big. The driveway is minimized as much as we possibly can minimize it and have two cars be able to maneuver around and, and head back out straight, so they don't have to back out. So the tail of the tape here is basically right up in this chart. We, we tried to place the new development over the existing structure as much as we can after we moved it out of the flood zone. But we have 3,384 square feet of new impact. We were able on this particular property to restore 664 square feet of previously degraded area. That would be the, the portions of the existing structure. That leaves the balance of 27, 20 square feet, which we now have to treat for two to one mitigation. That's 5,440 square feet of mitigation on a 7,710 square foot lot after we bring a driveway in and the new structure. So we are very challenged on that. And so we are looking to employ the, the particular caveat and regulations that says you look to provide an equivalent level of environmental protection. So what we have done in terms of mitigation, and again, we, we've done two separate NOIs so that the nice people, the karate's at, at 448 Washington Street, they invited me to their home. I laid out the, the, the plan in front of them. I have their letter with their comments on it. What we want, but we didn't want to do is encumber their deed with all the work that's on 448 rear, which is why we filed a separate notice of intent for the small portion of the driveway that crosses their property. We have calculated the impact, which is 575 square feet of riverfront area and incorporated that into the mitigation for 448 rear. So in terms of 448 rear, you notice, I mean, we basically took every square foot of the property. A lot of it is already distressed with invasive species. There's a minimal lawn area and that's the way we propose it after construction. You notice that the only thing we're preserving outside of the footprint is a five foot wide strip around the perimeter of the building. The rest is going to be converted to mitigation. That gets us 2,315 square feet of mitigation. So our environmental benefits that we're doing is, one, we are managing the driveway runoff with a fairly extensive infiltration system. First, we made the driveway a pervious feature. Secondly, a gateway consultants has designed a, an infiltration feature so that we don't, as the karate's had mentioned in their letter that's on file with the commission. They, what they didn't want to see is like a water chute or, or sluice way from the driveway heading right down to the river. This driveway is going to be elevated. This is about an eight foot high retaining wall at its highest location here. This little bridge feature is actually going to enter the second floor of the, the proposed dwelling. So the architect got a little creative, knowing that we had to lessen the slope here so that we didn't have a very steep driveway. So anyway, there's an extensive infiltration system so that it manages all the water for the driveway. There is a, a rain garden proposed here that is going to manage the roof runoff. So the, the plan shows a piping that connects, collects the roof runoff and then directs it to the rain garden. And then, as I said, the property is impacted with a lot of Asiatic bittersweet. There are Norway maple trees. We're going to try to save as many trees as we can. There there's honeysuckle. There's a Japanese barberry, I believe, is a whole suite of invasive plants. And we're going to go through and eradicate those plants. Ross and Lynn will become stewards of the grounds and, and once we pass through and, and make, you know, the initial removal, they will keep an eye on it through, well, you know, through the rest of their lives to, to keep pulling the, the sprouts that we know will keep coming back. It's going to take some work to pull those sprouts. But between the invasive species removal and the stormwater management, we hope that is a, an, a higher equivalent level of environmental protection that'll make up the balance of the two to one mitigation. We are also, as a benefit, we are obviously moving the structure back away from the water. It is, you know, depending on where you measure from, from here, the, the outermost portion of the deck is about 29 square feet. This is about from the face of the house here back to the edge of the new deck is about 20 square feet. So pulling the structure back off the, the waterfront, out of the flood zone, invasive species management and and the stormwater management, we hope that is, would suffice for the equivalent level of environmental protection. Recall that we used this approach at 12 Woodward Avenue last year. A neighbor did appeal that and it went through DEP and the work was upheld. That project is currently under construction and the mitigation, most of it's already in. And, but the commission has used that approach and it has been sort of adjudicated by the DEP. As of now, we just got the file numbers, I think, Monday. There were no comments on either filing by the DEP, so hopefully they're in agreement with our calculations and our presentation. And, and so we hope the commission looks favorably on the application.
Okay. I will open up to public comments. Anybody who has a comment on this project, please raise your hand.
You have no hands up on the Zoom? There's none here in the room.
Right, Commissioner, roll call comments.
Member Cook.
I have a couple of questions about the area towards the water. Do you, what's actually going to go in where the existing wood wall was underneath the house and that? I couldn't find it in the plans, what you were planning to do for planting some stuff up here on the front side. Other than that, I'm comfortable with the rest of the plan.
All right, so we did have mitigation notes down here on the plan. These are all taken from the coastal zone management plant list. It's a, a nice suite of plants, perennials and, and shrubs, and that's what we plan to put down there. But where we, like we did at 12 Woodward Avenue, if we remove an invasive plant, we're going to fill in that, that opened up area now with, you know, a mixture of these either grasses or shrubs. we're going to fill in that opened-up area now with, you know, a mixture of these either grasses or shrubs. And that's how we're going to restore those areas.
Respond after everybody's up.
Yeah, thanks, Bill. Can we just get through all the comments and then make a note of what the questions were and address them all at the end?
Yes.
Member Sergeant?
Yeah, I give you credit for moving the building back, you know, from the coastal area, that's huge. And invasive species, it would have to be removed mechanically or hand-built and deposited in an approved manner. And again, I'll give you benefit for the restoration of moving the house. I'm just curious how many trees will be removed? I didn't see any trees that were posed in the mitigation areas at all. If you're putting shrubs and other things in, in taking away trees, you've changed the habitat considerably. And I'm wondering if the proposal, the realignment of the boat rails would impact salt marsh and all the watering must be adequately treated. We're being discharged, a two-year monitoring, the mortality of mitigation plantings, and perpetual condition in the COC prohibits further alteration within the mitigation area, except if it may be required to maintain the area in its mitigated condition. Thank you.
Member Terry?
I have no additional comments. I think you did a great design. You've been a thoughtful approach to addressing the riverfront area standards, so thank you for that.
Member Jackson?
No, I think the plan is fine. I did wonder why you didn't put some of the mitigation down where the sewer pump is or along the, what I think is the northeast side, where the restoration area jumps up around the corner to the house. Since you've already blocked that off anyway with the restoration area. I have no further comments.
I guess my only comment is, you know, we have had some RCOCs come in recently that really haven't followed the planting plan because it's really not much of a planting plan. It's kind of the same five species that are on every plan we see. I don't know, the riverfront, it might be nice to have a bit more of a planting plan. So we actually make sure that the area is being planted appropriately with a great number of plantings. Up to the commissioners.
Yeah, I mean, if there's going to be a planting plan, I think I'd include some sections about invasive species removal as well in terms of what the protocol is for doing that. Bill, I think, do you want to address the other questions?
Yeah, sure. Well, Bill Cook, yeah, because that, what it, we, I think we do need the planting plan, but what I'd like to see is without the existing structure there. So we can just see what the new house is going to look like and then not have it confused with any of the old stuff and see where the plants are actually going to be. That's what I was trying to get to in the front area.
Yeah, final conditions plan.
Okay. So it sounds like a landscape plan is desired on a complicated project like this, and I think that's a valid concern. Hopefully you could make that as an order of condition so that they may be able to get started this season. Commissioner Sergeant had comments about removing the invasive species mechanically. Yes, that's what we figured that we would, you know, go through and do a cutting and whatever we can pull out with, you know, root wrenches and that sort of stuff, that's what we would do. And then the rest would be up to the Varneys to do continual observations and pulling reemergent seedlings and that sort of stuff to exhaust the seed bank that's in the soil. The boat rails, boat rails, it's really, that's a glorious term, that's what we called it on the plan. It's really a couple of two-by-fours that are on end and it helps, there's a little winch up at the top. I don't think shifting those over and rotating them out of the house footprint is going to have any impact whatsoever on the salt marsh. So I'm not concerned there. And the two-year monitoring and the perpetual condition with respect to the mitigation, that's something that the DEP has been requiring. Commissioner Jackson, I think you were questioning why not any mitigation down in here. And frankly, this is a very steep slope, it's already thickly vegetated, and I didn't want to have any responsibility for trying to establish something on that slope. So that's why we didn't propose any mitigation in there. And I think, you know, the rest were kind of related to the planting plan. So I'm happy to provide a planting plan, we're hoping again that can be like as a condition that we have to provide it at some milestone. Certainly before occupancy, but, you know, maybe when, some reasonable milestone.
I'm wondering if trees could be included in that planting plan as a replacement for the trees?
We'll be taking that. Yes, we could certainly do that. The answer is one, two, three, four, five, there's six larger trees here that are going to be impacted. But we are, we made great efforts to save some of the largest species that are on the property. And we did that, you know, more as a nod to the Karathis up slope here. They were really hoping to keep this area as canopied as much as possible. So we're hoping that they're happy with the outcome, but we will install some additional trees in the planting plan.
Bill, do you think you can get the planting plan done before the pre-construction meeting with the agent?
Yes.
And is the commissioner's okay with making that a condition?
Yes, I am.
I am.
Then Commissioner Jackson moves to close the public hearings for NOI zero-two-eight-three-zero-nine-two at four forty-eight Rear Washington Street and NOI zero-two-eight-three-zero-nine-three at four forty-eight Washington Street.
Commissioner Cook, seconds both.
Oh, Member Cook?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Member Jackson?
Yes. Commissioner Jackson moves to approve NOI zero-two-eight-three-zero-nine-two at four forty-eight Rear Washington Street and NOI zero-two-eight-three-zero-nine-three at four forty-eight Washington Street with the aforementioned conditions, including a planting plan to be approved by the agent prior to the pre-construction meeting.
Commissioner Cook, seconds?
Oh, Member Cook?
Yes.
Sergeant?
Yes.
Member Terry?
Yes.
And Member Jackson?
Yes.
All right, thank you very much.
Terrific, thank you.
Back to the top of the new business section. We have an extension request on zero-two-eight-two-seven-two-nine at one-twelve-one-fourteen Wheeler Street. Applicant is Gerald Byrne. It's extension of Order of Commission zero-two-eight-two-seven-two-nine for reconstruction of front entry and removal of asphalt paving and riverfront area. Gerald Byrne representing.
Gerald Byrne. Not here in the room either. You're in table editor?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, we'll get to that one.
Thank you very much.
Next item, Notice of Intent zero-two-eight-three-zero-eight-seven at eighteen Briarwood Court. Applicants are Thomas Ball and Donna Heaney who raised, rebuilt a single-family home and associated utilities and buffer zone to bordering vegetated wetlands. John Judd, Gateway Consultants, saying represent.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the record, John Judd and Thomas Ball is here representing projects at Briarwood Court. This is a correction, there's an existing, I'm not sure, Chuck, you can bring it up? I can bring my plan up if you'd like. But there's an existing structure there that's on the property. The Balls live at number eighteen Briarwood Court. And the adjacent property, which will show up on the screen here, has a pre-existing structure on it, which is over toward the right here, right in that area. It's an existing workshop that's partially going to remain. And Tom and his son are going to work around that with this proposed new dwelling that his son Sam will be living in. This property is ninety-five thousand square feet, so it's a couple of acres, well, almost an acre and a half, I should say, but a portion of that property is in the buffer zone as shown here. The existing dwelling, shown as number eighteen, is the hatch building. And there's going to be, two of those walls will remain. And the remainder would be expanded as shown on the footprint. We do have calculations that show the area in the buffer zone that is proposed. And we do show the mitigation planting as indicated on the plan. The existing footprint of that building is four hundred and seventeen square feet. And the proposed dwelling is going to be sixteen hundred and ten square feet for a net increase in impervious area of eleven hundred and ninety-three square feet. So we're proposing two thousand three hundred and eighty-six square feet of mitigation planting as shown on the plan. We do show erosion control along that stone wall, so we really have two barriers, if you will, of protecting that wetland area. We have the natural stone wall and then we have the erosion control mulch sack as shown. This is, you know, a section of the property that is accessed through a gravel driveway. You can see we're proposing a step sewer tank as well as water service into the structure. The mitigation plantings is shown closer to the wetland edge on both sides. And Tom and I are here to answer any questions that you might have for the project. It's really no grading proposed, everything's going to be remaining as shown. There is a gravel parking area that would come off the existing gravel driveway, but that's really the extent of the project. Tom and I are here to answer any questions.
Great, thank you. Open up to public comments.
We have no hands up on the Zoom and none here in the room.
Okay, Commissioner Rolfe comments?
No questions.
Yeah, removing frag mighty, as you're proposing, is almost never successful. They thrive in disturbed soil. I'm wondering if you could find elsewhere, you know, to plant that mitigation planties? If you try to remove frag mighty, fine, I don't think it'd be successful. And all the watering must be treated before being discharged, two-year monitoring for the mortality mitigation plantings.
I'm Sergeant. You're pretty am.
Member Terry? I would like to say continuing condition prohibiting further alteration within any restored or mitigated areas except as may be required to maintain those areas in their restored mitigated conditions.
And Member Jackson?
I have no additional comments.
Hey.
Oh, you already.
You think you could give them mitigation?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we actually have two hundred percent aside from that. Yeah, so we have the planting.
Okay. They gave it a go.
We ready to move forward?
Yes.
We have to move on.
Yeah, we ready for, are we ready to close the hearing?
Yep.
Okay, Commissioner Jackson moves to close the public hearing for NOI zero-two-eight-three-zero-eight-seven at eighteen Briarwood Court.
Commissioner Cook, seconds?
Oh, Member Cook?
Yes.
Yes, Member Terry?
Yes.
Member Jackson?
Yes. Commissioner Jackson moves to approve NOI zero-two-eight-three-zero-eight-seven at eighteen Briarwood Court with the aforementioned conditions.
Commissioner Cook, seconds?
Oh, Member Hook?
Yes.
Sergeant, yes. Member Terry?
Yes.
Member Jackson?
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Hey, next item. Notice of Intent zero-two-eight-three-zero-eight-eight at ten Seaview Road. Maria Silva, applicant for septic system replacement and buffer zone to bordering vegetated wetlands and intermittent stream. John Judd, Gateway Consultants, saying representing.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. This is, for the record, John Judd, engineer with Gateway Consultants, representing the applicant for this property at the end of Seaview Road in East Gloucester. One of the sections here that does not have municipal sewer. This is a unique site where the septic system is actually pumped across the street up closer to a wetland that's actually across the street. So we're, we have an approved plan here from the Board of Health, has advanced treatment. Existing tank will be reused, so we have two tanks, one is a two-compartment tank, and then we're actually going into a second, three-compartment tank. So we're going to have really good primary settling and active treatment. And then we're having a pressure distribution system in the front yard. And that would be as far away from the wetlands as we can possibly go. Again, we have a failed system here and we're, we have an approved system designed from the Board of Health. And we're here to get permission to install this to meet Title V so they can transfer the property. Answer any questions you might have?
Public comments, anybody who has a question or comment, please raise their hand.
You have no hands up on the Zoom and none here in the room.
Right, Commissioner Rolfe comments?
I'm Cook.
No comments.
Sergeant, I want to note that this has advanced, I could get them removed, so.
Terry? I have no comments.
Jackson?
I have no comment. Sounds like a win for everybody.
I saw a question, there was a, there is a tree in the front yard.
Yep.
I'm sure that's going to be replaced.
Question, is it going to be removed?
I imagine it's right in the middle of the field there.
Okay, yeah, yes, the twelve, yes, that would have to come out. I, they were, they wanted to maintain that tree, but obviously we needed the leaching area. We'd be happy to replace that somewhere else, away from the leach field rather than not have the roots. But that's obviously an acceptable condition.
You put it in that sort of back quarter near the stream in the back.
Behind the driveway.
Good for all the commissioners.
Okay. Commissioner Jackson moves to close the public hearing for NOI zero-two-eight-three-zero-eight-eight at ten Seaview Road.
Commissioner Cook, seconds?
Oh, Member Cook?
Yes.
Yes, Member Terry?
Yes.
I'm Jackson.
Yes. Commissioner Jackson moves to approve NOI zero-two-eight-three-zero-eight-eight at ten Seaview Road with the aforementioned conditions, including the tree replacement.
Commissioner Cook, seconds?
Oh, Member Cook?
Yes.
Sergeant?
Yes.
Member Terry?
Yes.
And Member Jackson?
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item is Notice of Intent zero-two-eight-three-zero-nine-zero at ten Oaks Avenue. Joseph Galino, applicant, this is reconstruction of a multifamily home and land subject to coastal flowage and buffer zone to coastal bank. Joseph Galino of Fadera Engineering, representing.
Hello?
Hi.
All right, I'm trying to just get my camera to start, I apologize, one second, but, um, I can start without my camera. I apologize. Do one second. My name's Giovanni Fadera, I am the project engineer. I'm sorry about the camera, the camera's not working, but, all right, I'm the Giovanni Fadera, I'm the project engineer. And this is, this project is at eight Oaks Ave in Magnolia. It is up against the Atlantic Ocean. And we have, we have land subject to coastal storm flowage on site. I can, if I can just share my screen.
All right, you can try.
Okay.
There we go.
Can you see the screen right here?
Loading, yes, we can see it.
Okay, so these are just site images. Um it's an existing eleven unit building, it was built around nineteen hundred, so it's uh over a hundred years old. Um it has some history to it, it used to be a hotel at one point, um but it is currently in an eleven unit building. And um as you can tell, it's right up against the water. Um so um it's in the, like I said, it's in the land subject coastal storm flowage. Uh this is a good aerial image of the site, a lot of, you know, the site is um uh lawn. And then we have some parking over here and then the building and um. It's a, it's a sewer, it's a public sewer, no, I'm sorry, it's a septic system. The septic system right now is located in the front. So the project is going to reconstruct this, reconstruct the south wing, this is the south wing right here, right? And I can show the plans, here are the plans right here. This is the existing conditioned site plan. Uh as you can tell, the septic system is in the front over here, right up against the water, this is the waterside. Uh like I said, this is the south wing, this is going to be getting demolished. And we are reconstructing uh the two units over here on the south wing. And this is gonna be the proposed site plan right here. Um as you can tell, we're expanding the uh footprint a little bit. Uh but it is going to be raised because we have the um the flood zone at elevation thirty-three, the base flood elevation's at thirty-three. So as you can tell, that line is located right here and right here, it kind of cuts through the building about the one-third of the building is in it. Um so currently, the south wing has a unit on the ground floor that's at elevation, I believe, twenty-nine. So it's within the flood elevation by four feet. We're tearing it down and we're gonna elevate the entire south wing. Um and it is going to be elevated at a bit, a first floor elevation of thirty-five, so it's gonna be two feet above the base flood elevation. Here's an elevation view from the architect, as you can tell, this is the south wing right here. We're gonna have it on piers, um and it will be above the base flood elevation. I think you can see right here, it's a blue line uh right there, so. Um it meets all the performance standards of land subject to coastal storm flowage. Um this area under the building will be crushed stone, so it will be a um pervious surface. So um the overall site with that crushed stone under the building, it'll be a net decrease of impervious area on site. Um so we didn't incorporate any stormwater mitigation just because of the net decrease of uh stormwater um impervious area on site. And so, but other than that, it's a pretty self-explanatory building, it's just a tear down and reconstruction of a um the the building. It's going to remain eleven units, the septic system is not going to be touched. Um so the same bedroom counts are going to be uh in the existing as proposed, so. Um but there are no other resource areas on set, um at least in the project area. We did provide a um this erosion control plan right here, which shows the area that would be demolished, as well as an erosion control barrier that would be a soap fence uh straw waddle. It'd be a twelve inch diameter straw waddle with the um with the two foot high um soap fence. So there's the detail right there. And that erosion control barrier is outside of the one hundred foot buffer from the coastal bank. So we're keeping all worth outside of the coastal bank, uh the hundred foot buffer of the coastal bank. Um work will stay within this area. Um and all this, the stockpile and construction staging will be outside of the resource area. Um but uh anything that's gonna be inside here is just gonna be parking as the parking is today. So that's gonna remain untouched, it's not gonna have any earth disturbance. Um this is designated parking for construction vehicles. Um but that is a quick overall um point of what I have. I'm happy to answer any questions. Um and that I'll hand it over to you.
Hey, thank you. Uh we will take public comments now, any members of the public who wish to comment on the project, please raise your hand.
Uh we have uh no hands up on the Zoom, but uh we have one here.
I'm Robert Brown, I'm gonna butter at twelve Coleswood Lane. Um just a couple of clarifying questions, can you tell me the height of the new extension?
Yes, the south wing. So let's go to the architectural plans right here. So the south wing is going to have a height of twenty-five feet, just a little over twenty-five feet. And that is with respect to the average grade of the building. So as you can see right here, so it's gonna go up to two stories.
But you didn't share your screen, we can't.
We got to see your screen.
Uh am I not sharing the screen?
No, no mark.
I'm sorry. I thought it was still uh, okay, can you see this right here?
It's loading.
Okay. So this, this is the south wing right here, um ocean is to the left. So as you can tell right here, uh it's gonna be twenty-five feet, that's going to be the building height, and that is to the roof ridge. And that is with respect to the average grade of this, of the building. And that is the definition or the zoning by law, so two stories, twenty-five feet, just a little over twenty-five feet.
Okay, my my second question, um again regarding the rebuilt south wing. How much further is it extended towards the water than the current structure?
So. This is a good, comparing these two images right here, these two plans, this is the existing um building right here, and this is the proposed. So um the proposed building will be extended, and it's going to be about, I wanna say, eight feet further than the existing face of the south wing.
Basically where the patio is now.
Exactly.
Okay. Okay, last question, and and probably the most important one. Unless I'm mistaken, uh that building is sided in asbestos. What are you gonna do to mitigate when you're tearing it down? What are you gonna do to mitigate the asbestos in the air?
It's a good question, but I know the uh owner has been talking to, I I believe so, one, someone from the ownership team, I believe, is on. But um if, I I know they were talking to a contractor who would be removing the asbestos and disposing it at an off-site facility that is approved for asbestos, so um.
My understanding is that's required to be tented, no?
That is correct, yeah, I I know they are, they they're going to do it exactly how it needs to be done according to the law. Um I know that was a talking point with the um with the Board of Health, I believe. So it will be removed and it will be disposed of at uh at an off-site facility, approved off-site facility.
Yeah, my my, I have a more selfish concern, which is just what goes into the air when you're tearing it down. I'm right next to you. That's why I'm concerned about the tent.
Yeah, no, I I I totally understand your concerns. Um I I'm sure that the contractor who will be handling all the removal of the asbestos, they'll, they'll do it in a manner that um, you know, is by the law and how they normally handle uh asbestos. So I can't speak too much on behalf of that, but I'm su, they are going to have a contractor who is licensed with asbestos. Um it'll be um, it'll, it'll follow the law, so.
Oh, you're saying it will be tented?
Excuse me?
You're saying the structure will be tented when you're tearing it down?
Um.
I don't think, I think what he's saying is that the contractor will be uh engaging a licensed asbestos removal company and they'll be applying. I don't know if he can speak specifically to what methods they'll be using, but uh it sounds like they will be uh, you know, utilizing the whatever required.
He's saying they're complying with the law, that's my understanding of the law, that's why I'm asking.
Yeah, I I guess what I'm, my understanding of what he's saying is he's not familiar enough with it to say whether or not, one way or another, what they're gonna do or not.
I get it.
We, I'm, I, I, I think asbestos is a concern, I think, for us as well, to the extent that any asbestos dust or uh asbestos getting materials land into uh land into a resource area, land to just um subject, subject to coastal storm flowage. So I think we could also add a condition that any demolition uh utilize a licensed asbestos contractor that follows, you know, proper procedures.
Okay, final question, um you, do you see any need to um uh I don't know what the right word is, adjust or or change the wall that's between our properties right now? There's a stone wall, as you know, between our two properties.
Can you remind me where you are located?
Right, right where your cursor is now.
Right here?
That's my property that's on, and just below that, that line is a stone wall.
Okay, so this, so, um.
Yeah, it's about, I'd say it's about five feet tall, maybe.
Okay, I don't believe that stone wall is going to be touched in any way, shape or form, um it will remain.
Okay.
If that's, if that's what your question.
It is, thank you.
Yeah, I I don't think they have any intention to remove any walls or fencing or anything like that, just the building.
All right, I appreciate your answers, thank you.
Absolutely.
Hey, are there any more uh questions from the public?
Uh we still have no hands up on the Zoom and another chair in the room.
All right, we'll move to Commissioner Roll Call comments.
I'm cook.
Um I would just like to re-clarify, I, it could be my hearing, but I thought you said that there was actually a decrease in the impervious surface. Um and I'd like you to explain that, cause if you're going to a larger roof structure, it would obviously be an increase.
Yes, the larger roof structure.
Yeah, sorry, can we, we're gonna take all the uh commissioner comments first and then just make a note of your answers and we'll address them.
Okay, sorry, sorry about that, yeah.
Number Sergeant.
Um yes, DEP commented, um they said that the project doesn't meet stormwater standards as proposed. Project meets the definition of redevelopment, because there's a development rehabilitation expansion in phase projects on previously developed sites. But if the redevelopment results in no net increase in previous area. The checklist for stormwater report was not submitted, no stormwater calculations were submitted. No information submitted to confirm if the project meets WPA stormwater standards to the maximum extent practicable, which is defined on page three, volume two, chapter three, checklist for redevelopment projects in the stormwater handbook. Information must be submitted, how mass, mass um maximum extent practical is met, based on the three factors listed in the handbook. Handbook also requires that there be an improvement for existing conditions. On volume two, chapter three in the handbook includes examples of improvement over existing conditions. I think that really needs to be done.
All right, number Terry.
Uh I don't have any additional comments other than to reiterate a a condition on the um uh compliance with asbestos removal laws.
Number Jackson.
I just wondered if the contract has sorry need to um install wire netting over the crushed stone underneath the new addition. Um since that's in a flood zone, I had visions of rocks washing out onto the street and opposite shore. That was it.
Any comments?
I have nothing additional.
Okay, um. You have uh responses?
I, I do, so to clarify, the de, net decrease in impervious area, um that is taken into consideration the area that is under the new south wing. The south wing is is going to be elevated and having crushed stone underneath is technically considered a pervious surface. So however, there is that question of, well, there's roof area above it. So I I guess there's that um, you know, the question of if it's considered pervious or impervious, uh pervious or impervious, right? So um what we can and are happy to do is uh put roof gutters from the new south wing under the proposed building to go into that crushed stone, so that it'll act as a pervious surface of that new south wing, where all the rough roof runoff will be going under the building. Um and essentially will have no impact on, you know, added impervious area, if that makes any sense. But if you're looking at the area that's under the new south wing and all the proposed additions, um the removal of some site impervious areas, there is a net decrease of ninety square feet um over the entire site. So it's very, very close, I mean, we're decreasing by ninety square feet. So um maybe it just wasn't clarified with Mass DEP that we, we did not trigger the stormwater standards. Um so I'm happy to clarify that with um with DEP and and anyone else, but I hope that answers any questions or concerns.
I believe in your application, you said there would be a net decrease of two hundred and sixty square feet.
The site pervy, the site impervious areas, which are walkways, things like that. Um there is a net decrease of uh two hundred and, well, two hundred and sixty square feet of site impervious areas, not, not including uh roof runoff.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Uh I I believe you didn't um submit a checklist for stormwater report, um or any of the stormwater requirements that EP asked for.
I am happy to submit that. Um like I said, because the project was over, looked at as an overall net decrease, we um we, I I felt that I I believe it wasn't uh required because of, you know, we're decreasing the impervious area, so.
Well, you categorically, you have a, you have a multifamily residential property with more than nine units. Um so you are subject to the the fullest extent of the stormwater standards. Your analysis may take into account that um there's a, may or may not be a decrease in impervious surfaces, but um you still need to go through that analysis in the first place. So I think we're gonna need to see that uh report, the checklist, um that that analysis.
Okay, no, I'm absolutely happy to provide whatever is needed.
And did you have a response on my question about um some kind of netting or something over the crushed rock? Do you see that being in any danger of washing out during flood conditions?
Well, it depends what kind of crushed stone it is, if it's three-quarter inch crushed, crushed stone, I believe having the uh netting above would make sense, but if it's more of a um, you know, riprap, uh one-quarter cubic yard and stone, uh it probably wouldn't go anywhere, right? So.
Okay.
If we could spec the uh quarter cubic yard and stone to kind of hold it all in place, if that makes you feel, you know, comfortable.
Yeah, I, yeah, I would like a condition that it would be judged to be, hold itself in place or be netted if not.
Okay.
Thank you.
It's, it's Bill Cook again, I'm, I'm still hung up on this, I I don't know about any of the other commissioners. But if we're, if we're doing all of this additional roofline work, um in every other case, that's an increase in impervious surface, regardless of the fact that underneath is stone, that doesn't get taken into consideration. It's based on the roof line. And that, we have a significant increase, and from what I can understand, we have a significant increase, and I still don't see where it's being subtracted from. I just, it, I can't wrap my head around it.
Bill, do you um, do you think the gutter, adding gutters and draining into that stone area underneath would uh would result that? I mean, I I see your concern, it's impervious for precipitation, but I, I guess it's it's pervious for storm flowage. Storm surge, is that should infiltrate into the ground instead of hitting a foundation?
The thing is, it's not just on the south side, if you're looking at the plans, you've got additions on the north side too.
I believe that he would be dealing with that issue when he um looks at DEP's comments and proving that he's doing the maximum extent practicable. But I think that would be.
I, I think.
Go ahead.
In my opinion, in my opinion, I, it's, it's, it's an increase in impervious surface.
I don't disagree with you, but you you would be dealing with that when he does the stormwater analysis.
And he also did have a planting plan. Somewhere. Um. I don't know where in your application you mentioned it, but there was a mention of planting. Uh let's see, where is it?
Yeah, see, like, I, I. Yeah, see, like, I, I, I just, I'm trying to. I mean, I understand putting gutters on it and directing the water underneath, um, I, I understand that concept. But we've never taken that into consideration on any other project that we ever looked at and says, oh, we'll just put it, you know, run your gutters underneath your, your deck, and that's impervious, so that's okay and it doesn't count, we've never done that before.
No, I, I hear what you're saying, yeah.
Yeah, my opinion, this is, this project is a definite net increase in impervious.
So if you think about it though, I mean, the amount of stormwater that's going above the new south wing, right? It's uh, the south wing, I believe is, um. Is a little over fourteen hundred square feet, right? So, any rainwater that's going above that fourteen hundred square feet. If it gets redirected to under the building, wouldn't that in turn have the same effect as if the building wasn't there?
I'm, I'm not saying, I understand what you're saying, but that's something that we have never taken into consideration before. Um, when we, when we calculate impervious surface, and by taking it into fact now. I mean, it, it allows you to say, well, we're under a threshold for stormwater management, we're under this. We, I don't believe we can take that into consideration.
What, what the applicant, what the applicant is suggesting is stormwater management, um, but that has to be part of, of his argument. Um, it, it doesn't mean that the area is not impervious or pervious, but that has to be in his calculation on how he's going to manage that. And putting it in underneath the building is part of what he should be presenting for his stormwater management. And this is what D E P called him out on, that he didn't bring this up, so he really needs to go back to the drawing board. Do the whole redevelopment uh project according to D E P standards in the handbook, as well as the checklist. And that would deal with, you know, the, how he's going to be dealing with, you know, roof runoff.
And if he could include as part of that, the area covered by the new vegetation, that would be helpful. That would be a part of your plan. You have it all listed, um. In the Fodera Engineering, you don't have page numbers here. In the Temporary Erosion Sedimentation and Pollution Pre- Prevention Plan, and then you go on to the plantings. Looks like page around thirty-eight or forty-seven in your plan, in your proposal.
Okay.
Okay.
I, I have one, I guess I have one question, if that area under the building is gonna now function as a uh, sort of a stormwater detention basin, um, do you have other plans for uh kind of constructing that uh as, to function for stormwater infiltration as opposed to just kind of laying gravel over the top surface?
I'll make sure that when we um, you know, go back to the standards and are running all the calculations that the required recharge and um you know, water quality treatment, we're meeting the requirements based on uh the standards, so we'll have it designed uh basically like a stone depth, um, and the water uh volume that would be recharged, so we'll have that all aligned.
I, I have one, one other issue, and it's more um border health. Um, discharging stormwater right above its existing septic system is not a good idea, um.
So, I, I, I mean. That goes back into the area of, that's why I would arguably say that it's not impervious area, it is a pervious surface, just because if the stormwater above is going re, is being redirected to under the building, that's why it would make sense that would be considered a pervious surface, right? Um. If we're adding roof runoff and adding stormwater directed to that area. Then it would make sense that you're, you know, kind of adding recharge into the ground, but if it's just the area above. You're just redirecting the stormwater to kind of bypass the building and go into the pervious surface. So ideally, um, the, uh, if recharge were required, it would be a better location would be in the rear to the north side of the site. Cause like what you said, the, stay away from the septic, but that's why arguably the area under the south wing is not a impervious area.
It, it sounds like you have some work to do.
Okay.
Doc, did you have any additional comments to ours?
Uh, no, I, I think they need to look at it, I mean, I, you know. If they did the stormwater analysis, uh, we'd have a better idea of what, what the plan really is, or how the stormwater is dealt with. And I guess, yeah, I mean, it'd be good to see what is being proposed for how to deal with that stormwater, because, you know, we're assuming that the land underneath existing structures should be pervious, uh. Yeah, septic issues, definitely. Concern there too.
Do you think you can, our next meeting is uh the fifteenth, do you think you can have all this done by then, or do you want to push that to the first meeting?
No, I think we can have it done by the fifteenth.
Okay, Commissioner Jackson moves to continue N O I zero two eight three zero nine zero at Ten Oaks Avenue to the Conservation Commission meeting of October fifteenth, twenty twenty-five.
Thank you.
Number Cook. Cook?
Yes.
Number Sergeant?
Yes.
Number Terry?
Yes.
Number Jackson?
Yeah.
Hi, thank you, we'll see you in two weeks.
Thank you.
Still don't see.
The next item is uh notice of intent zero two eight three zero nine one at thirty-three Way Road. Lata Shukla, applicant, Ecological Restoration Limited Project for the management of aquatic vegetation species with herbicides and algaecides, and Shukla pond is land under water bodies and waterways, Andrew Tebow from Goddard Consulting represents.
Hi, everyone, uh, for the record, my name is Andrew Tebow, wetland scientist with Goddard Consulting. Before I kick this off, um, would you mind also promoting uh Mike Tartaglia as a panelist? Um, he'll be joining this presentation as well. Thank you, alright, well, Mike joins in, um, again for the record, my name is Andrew Tebow, wetland scientist with Goddard Consulting. Um, a bit of context for the commission here with, with two of us here, so this notice of intent was filed in collaboration, so. Um, Mike that you see on the call is a member of Solitude Lake Management. So Solitude is the aquatic um resource management professionals on this project, they're the ones to go out to these properties. Conduct the evaluations of the ponds, um identify the issues, and then create and carry out the, the management protocols. Goddard's role in this is then to work with Solitude, um, take their plans. Guide them under the provisions of the Wildlife Protection Act, and then handle the actual ecological permitting, so we file these in, in collaboration. Um, so all that to say, um, this notice of intent that you guys have before you for Thirty-Three Way Road. I'll pull up an area while I'm speaking, uh seeks to re-implement an aquatic management program um on the property. There was one previously, this pond was managed previously on site, uh when this property sold. That management had ceased, and it's now seeing um some regrowth. So this whole entire property itself at Thirty-Three Way Road um is about twenty-eight acres. The notice of intent that we're discussing is solely for the pond that we see here, it's about a three quarter of an acre pond. Um, with an average depth of about four feet, uh max depth of about six feet. Um, as I had mentioned, this pond was managed previously um for nuisance aquatic vegetation. That management has now ceased, and they are again seeing um nuisance densities of pond weeds and filamentous algae mats. And so the intent is to, is to re-implement this protocol, so this was filed as an ecological restoration limited project. The intent of this notice of intent is simply to target and treat the uh, and the nuisance and invasive aquatic vegetation. To help um slow pond neutrophication, increase wildlife habitat, and assist the native vegetation um that we see here. So, we submitted a full notice of intent, it, it seeks approval for the implementation of um three different herbicides that are commonly used by Solitude for these types of projects. They are Tribune, Flumagard, and um copper algaecides. Solitude's typical protocol consists of monthly um surveys and treatments of the properties uh with reporting. So as I had said, this was done previously on the property, and we're now seeing the need for it again, so that's a broad overview of the project. Uh, if the commission has any questions on the specific treatment itself, the protocols, uh Mike is here to answer all of those questions.
Hey, thank you. We will open up to public comments, any members of the public who have a comment on this project, please raise your hand.
I have no hands up on the Zoom and none here in the room.
Commissioner Roll Call comments?
Number Cook?
Uh, no comments.
Sergeant?
Uh, yes, D E P also commented, you know, on this, uh, um, their comments were that the plant should be, excuse me, provided with shows the limited wetland resource areas and work access areas. Information should also be provided on current and target conditions and monitoring treatment protocols. Um, my comments are, in addition to the listed sources of nutrient loading that were mentioned in the site evaluation report. Real estate listing noted that this property has a handsome barn, multiple paddocks, and a chicken house. Looking at orthophobos, all of these are located in close proximity to the pond. suggests that if the homeowners wish to limit nutrient loading, more extensive vegetative buffer, maybe a grassy swale around portions of the pond. Be explored, thank you.
Number Terry?
Um, in the uh April twenty twenty-four uh report, uh I think that was prepared by Solitude. Um, it was recommended that an aeration unit could be installed to uh help disperse some of the uh algae growth. Has this been considered further? And that same report also recommended water quality testing to identify nutrient levels and algae species, has this been done?
Number Jackson?
I have no additional comment.
Um, yeah, I guess, i- in similar uh to you two, uh, Member Sergeant's comments, I was just kind of curious about um application of fertilizers and other types of chemicals and stuff uh that may also increase that uh nutrient load uh downstream in the pond.
Okay, you guys have, want to address these comments?
Sure, absolutely, um, thank you again for uh that overview, Andrew. Uh, my name is Mike Tartaglia uh from Solitude Lake Management, um. I will address the comments first about our uh runoff report from last year, um. The way that that property is arranged, the uh barn, which to my knowledge currently doesn't house any animals, and it hasn't for quite some time. Is actually located at a much lower elevation down a hill away from the pond. Um, and then for can you remind me what your second comment was uh regarding um nutrient management? Was it fertilizers or was it um a different aspect that you were, had questions about?
Uh, you, yours for uh grassy swale vegetation?
Yeah, um, yeah, it also said there was a chicken house as well as a paddock. When I looked at the orthophobos, the paddock is right there next to the pond.
Okay, um, so I, I believe it's referring to the paddock that's directly uh north of that pond, um, on- once again, I, I, there has not been animals there in quite some time, um. You know, with the new uh ownership of the property, that, that may change, and, and we can certainly look into um, some sort of nutrient remediation to limit any uh excess um materials that will, that could enter via runoff uh into the pond to limit algae growth, however. Um, in our experience with this pond in the past, uh as required, algaecide, herbicide treatments have been the best way to manage uh any nuisance algae and or plant growth, um, we have been in contact with the client about possibly doing an aeration install uh on the pond. Uh, no real movement there as of yet, uh however, we can certainly provide an update uh as to how they would like to move forward with that in the future, um. So as of right now, we are operating on the basis of a monthly uh operating system where a biologist and licensed applicator in the state of Massachusetts uh performs a visual inspection uh and survey of the pond, and only uh treatments will be conducted on an as-needed basis, uh this is not, certainly not a monthly treatment uh unless uh really required. Um, typically, we've treated this pond maybe two to three times a year, uh as opposed to every month from April to September.
Um, I also had a question about the, the reports recommendation for water quality testing, identify nutrient levels and algae species.
Yep, um, that's certainly we, something we can add on into uh our management program. Um, we do, we do extensive algae and water quality sampling uh throughout Massachusetts, so that, that is certainly something we can add into the program as necessary, um. If that is a, a requirement that you should have us do, um. It's a, it's a relatively simple process, and all uh results can be shared with the commission as they deem necessary.
Any other comments?
Um, I want, I wanted to check had any comment?
I, I, yeah, I guess my question was, you know, the application of uh fertilizer and stuff on the lawn. Um, you know, because a lot of that lawn kind of slopes right down into the pond, and uh I was curious if there could be some kind of a buffer area or something where that kind of stuff isn't applied, so that doesn't you know, takes away that, that potential source of, of nutrient loading.
Yeah, so Solitude has always uh stressed to its clients that uh fertilizer near the ponds can certainly uh increase uh nuisance plant growth, um, we do let all of our clients know this, um. However, th- there is no, w- we, we don't have the ability to stop them from uh putting any fertilizer down. Uh, at the end of the day, we're only there on a, a once a month basis, um, so uh, we can certainly stress this again to the client, uh, however, what they do uh with their own property after we are offsite. Uh, is completely out of control, uh our control, unfortunately.
You can put a con, condition that no fertilizer within fifty feet or so.
Yeah.
Twenty-five, fifty, I don't know.
Reinforce it. That's why it would be good to have a buffer.
Yeah, I agree with you, I, I mean, a, a vegetated buffer would be ideal, but I, I think we would need to see a proposal for that before vote on it or require it. Um, do we need to uh continue so they can uh submit a plan addressing D E P's comments?
Well, I can, I can jump in there, um, I'm happy to approach this however the commission sees fit. If the commission wanted to condition in that we provide a plan of the treatment area prior to any work kicking off, we're happy to do that. If the commission feels that you would rather us submit a plan ahead of time, then we can do that and just continue it out to the next meeting, because that won't be a heavy lift on our ends.
Well, I mean, it was more than just the treatment areas, wetland resource areas, work access areas.
Yep. Um, yeah, there are, there are wetlands to the north and the south, so we can, we can have a plan that demarcates at least their approximate locations, how they relate to the pond. And then we would show access and the, the limits of the treatment, just to confirm that it's only within the pond.
Make it a condition that it, uh, the plan be supplied to the uh agent prior to the work being done started.
We're more than happy to do that.
And I read you're looking for a five-year uh notice of order of conditions?
Yeah, that would be our intent.
Hey, is, is the mission okay with a five-year?
I think if we, yeah, I think if we see troubling trends, I'd like the ability to call them back in and maybe, maybe we could write in some conditions that, such as the vegetated barrier, if. if things don't get better.
Um, you, is, do you plan on, uh, preparing reports, annual reports or anything?
Yes, we, we certainly can, uh, do, I believe we actually did do, um, some form of summary, uh, report uh, last year for the prior residents. Um, however, if that wasn't included in, in our management plan, that's, that's not a problem at all. We can certainly provide that to you.
Let's have a, a condition that the, of a report be filed annually with, uh, a description of the work and, uh, uh, evaluation of success or, or further work or, um, you know, monitoring, uh, progress so that, uh, we can evaluate whether additional intervention by the commission is this.
Yes, that would, that is funny.
Not sound great, though. Okay. One member of the public, uh, which is?
Yes, I apologize for not being here at the beginning.
You just give your, your name.
Rachel Montanino, I live at twenty-two Way Road in East Gloucester. This is my daughter, Amy. She's profoundly deaf, but she has property um, adjacent to my property on Way Road. Um, and so obviously we're very interested in this. I've been on Way Road for fifty years, but, um, we went to the senior center, we went to the harbor master's office, we went. I said, where are they hiding? So I do apologize, but there was a big event at city hall tonight. There must have been four hundred people there. It was just unbelievable. And time got away and she was waiting for me to represent her. I would request, if the board would consider it, a continuation because we have no idea what is being asked for, you know, in this application. But I will tell you this because it was concerning to me just recently. I was at a function and a person that I know said, gee, I was over in your street, um, for a wedding recently. And I said, wedding? And she said, yes, they had wedding. She said, and I, we went right by your house and it was beyond your house. It was at thirty-three, uh, Way Road. And I thought, well, I don't know, uh, I don't know anything about that, but that made me curious as to what, you know, this was about, uh, because I didn't know what they were really asking for. But if you would be so kind as to have a continuation, as someone who's been there, someone who's lived in Gloucester all life, in Burtle Square, but has been on Way Road for fifty years, I feel compelled. There's over thirty acres of land in this property. And I feel compelled to kind of protect my daughter's interest and the city's interest and the neighborhood's interest, just to make sure if that wouldn't be too much of a burden on the, on the committee, I would really appreciate it if you could consider that. And, you know, I, I apologize for, it was just so unbelievable to see so many people at city hall on the balcony. I thought it was going to fall down. It was so bad. So time got away. And she showed up and said, we're supposed to be at a meeting, but it didn't say where. So I, I wasted a lot of time trying to find out where, where it was. But if you would be so kind, I mean, I may be the only person who's interested in this, but a good reason, a good reason. I mean, I'm not an obstructionist. And believe me, I love the area and I feel very grateful to live there. But I have an obligation since it really isn't my property, it's her property. If you would consider that, it would be very much appreciated. And I am very appreciative of the board's work. Believe me, I, I really am. And I, I don't mean to prolong anything, but this is important. I think this is very important. In what your mission is.
Okay, well, I think the applicant has some additional information to provide, so, um, I think we can continue for, uh, two weeks. The next meeting is on the fifteenth. Uh, the applicant is okay with that, uh, providing that information before the next meeting. We can move to get a, a motion to continue.
Hey.
We're happy to do that.
Hey, Commissioner Jackson moves to continue N O I zero two eight, three zero nine one at thirty-three Way Road to the Conservation Commission meeting of October fifteenth, twenty twenty-five.
Commissioner Cook seconds?
Oh, from Cook?
Yes.
Sergeant? Yes, member Terry?
Yes.
Member Jackson?
Yes.
Okay. Um, and there's, uh, you, there is information on, um, the commission website about the project too. There's a, there's a report submitted by the applicant, which is essentially their proposal um, for aquatic management, aquatic vegetation management, um, including, uh, algaecides and herbicide application. So, um, all that's in there. We, you can review it, go up for the next meeting.
So where would I find that information? I mean, is, do you have an office? Is it the building inspector's office?
Well, we had the commission, it's, it, it, the commission, conservation commissioner's office at the city hall annex on Pond Road.
Yeah.
Um, I think it's also available. We have a Google Drive where everything is, uh, in, in files and available, uh, online.
Okay, okay. But I know the, uh, location in Pond Road, we were there twice tonight, but.
Chuck would be the person to speak to if you have any questions.
Yes, just as for conservation and myself, where assistant agent can help you.
Great. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Hey, thank you very much.
Thank you, guys. We'll see you in two weeks.
Thank you.
Okay.
Do we have anybody from?
Extension.
Um,
Wheeler Street.
Uh, yes.
Gerald Byrne?
Yep. Like Jerry is here now.
Hey, we're gonna recall, uh, reopen, uh, extension zero two eight, two seven, two nine at one twelve, one fourteen Wheeler Street. Gerald Byrne, uh, extension of order of condition zero two eight, two seven, two nine for reconstruction of front entry and removal of asphalt paving and roof.
Uh, Jerry, if you're there, you are muted. You there, Jerry?
Jerry, we, uh, you're muted and you can hear us unmute and, uh, turn on your mic and let us know. Otherwise, we're gonna, and you do to the next meeting.
Do it himself again.
Uh, unmute yourself. Are you, are you able to unmute him?
Are you there, Jerry?
Okay, um, I think there's some technical difficulties, so, uh, I think we're gonna move on. Uh, to the next item.
Um, just a quick question. Chuck, do you know when his, um, order of conditions expires?
Uh, it'll be this month. Um, it'll be li- later this month.
Okay, but it's, it'll be before the next meeting, correct?
Uh, he just needed to get the, the request for extension in before. Um, we ran it at another time and it kind of continued several times. Um, oh.
Well, do we, um, do they already have any issue with creating an extension?
I'd like to know how long. You did, I don't think that was, yeah, in the, yeah, request, okay.
Yeah, I don't think he anticipates it need to be too long because when I, when he came in for the amendment, I mentioned getting the re- extension as well, and he didn't think he was going to need it. Um, I guess we could do one year.
That would be fine.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Okay.
True. Needs more than that, you can come in another year, sure.
Yeah. Commissioner Jackson moves to approve extension zero two eight, two seven, two nine at one twelve to one fourteen Wheeler Street for the period of one year.
Commissioner Cook seconds?
Well, call member Cook?
Yes.
Sergeant? Yes, number Terry?
Yes.
Member Jackson?
Yes.
So Jerry, if you can hear us, you're all set.
Did you reach out to him? Or, I don't know. Okay, certificates of compliance. Uh, first one is, uh, ever request for zero two eight, two nine, three zero at two eighty-nine R Concord Street?
Yeah, that one, uh, that one looked good. That was a, uh, they kind of moved a boathouse further back out of the A C E C and replanted that area. And, uh, Katie and I both went out there and it looks very good.
I have notes, special condition twenty-one is a continuing condition. And, uh, if there were any mitigation plantings that were done in the riverfront area, then, uh, under ten fifty H, the continuing condition for those.
Hey, Commissioner Jackson moves to approve request for certificate of compliance zero two eight, two nine, three zero at two eighty-nine Rear Concord Street as per the aforementioned Congress discussion.
Commissioner Cook seconds?
Um, Cook?
Yes.
Sergeant? Yes, number Terry?
Yes.
Number Jackson?
Yes.
Hey. Uh, next one for, uh, zero two eight, two seven, two one at thirty-five Massasoah Road. We've been waiting on an ad bill for this and you.
Not received anything, um, and quite well since we've requested it. I know they, they have it, but they're going to submit it, but they haven't.
They know they need to do that, so. Uh, I guess we'll just.
Just leave it.
There. Uh, the last one, or I guess there's two. Uh, a request for zero two eight, nine, one nine, three, three at Three Welch Lane, ratification of an unissued, uh, certificate of compliance from two thousand sixteen.
Commissioner Sergeant is?
Um, so yeah, for that one, uh, both this and the next one were both approved in twenty sixteen, but the actual paperwork was not issued. Um, you know, since completed the paperwork, uh, but there was a uh, condition on, um, oh, two eight, one nine, three, three, uh, permanent markers placed. Um, to mark the buffer zone and the resource area. Um, I had requested for confirmation that that had been installed, but I haven't received that yet. Um, so I'm not sure it has been done yet.
Okay.
Um, so it's up to the commissioner whether you're comfortable issuing a, uh, C O C knowing that that may not be placed.
I'd like to see, I'd like to see.
Wait on that one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We can ratify a seventeen fifty-seven if you want, but.
And for, uh, nineteen thirty-three, I, I also would like to see those installed before we, um, ratify that one. I think there were other, were there other, um, special conditions or continuing conditions that we should identify for the record or should we hold that up until we do the next, uh, till we're ready to, to pass it?
Uh, that's up to you.
Um,
There were no other lingering conditions that weren't questionable?
That was the only one that, that, uh, yeah, that I'm not sure was, was.
Okay.
You had, uh, findings from paragraph two of the order of conditions related to the no disturbance zone and general condition thirty-five, special condition two, special condition three, special condition five, and special condition eleven, well as general condition twenty-three, I believe, or, we noted this, um, continuing conditions.
Good.
Other commissioners are okay with that list?
Yeah.
Uh, we're not going to vote on it now. We'll wait for the permanent markers to be installed, but just to get it on the record that those are the conditions.
Yeah, do you want us to ratify seventeen fifty-seven?
Yeah, so, yeah, we can do that one. I think there's no issues with that, are there?
No.
Okay, Commissioner Jackson.
Oops, I'm sorry. Sorry, Andrew, just for the record, uh, the continuing conditions for that one include uh, special condition twenty-three order conditions. Okay.
Okay. Commissioner Jackson moves to ratify, um, what are we ratifying? The, uh, certificate of conditions for zero two eight, is that right? And what, zero two eight, one, seven, five, seven at six forty Essex Avenue.
Commissioner Cook seconds?
Oh, member Cook?
Yes.
Jerry? Yes.
And member Jackson?
Yes. Okay.
After violations? Member Sergeant's back?
Brotherhead returned.
Uh, first one, twenty-two Woodward Avenue, unpermitted deposition of fill in creation of parking area and riverfront area across the bank, lands subject to coastal storm floage and buffer zone to coastal resources.
Do, uh, have? Oh, yes.
Yes. Some carrying, and then you both have done. I own twenty-two Woodward Ave and nineteen whatever, adjacent property as well. Um, and the area in question is, um, yes, we did have some fill gravel put down. Um, however, that was existing parking that we had been using for quite some time and, um, I apologize that I didn't reach out for permission, but because we didn't remove any trees or shrubs and we have been using it for parking. Um, and realized we would need additional permission. Our plan was to just make it more, uh, aesthetically pleasing and plant grasses around the edge and, um, because we didn't go over the edge where we were parking before. Um, we didn't feel like we were disturbing anything. Um, we didn't remove any of the trees on the border or anything that the fill went over. And we were just kind of maintaining the grade. So, um, we're here today to, for the A T F and if you have any input, how we can uh, make the edging better. We were going to plant grasses and maybe a little mulch, mulch and netting. But if there's something else we can add or, um, question, we would like to see.
Okay. Want to do roll call comments?
Uh, sure. Uh, member Cook?
No. No question.
Okay, member Sergeant?
Um, I'm wondering if, um, you know, what you report, um, um, Jive, with, you know, what you've noticed and, you know, perhaps after overthrow photos and stuff like that. I, I, I'd like, you know, the, the agents and comments on that.
Um, yeah, I mean, I think there was definitely, um, at the screen here. Um, so you can see kind of the existing grade on the, the grass here. Um, you know, so it is filling in a bit, you know, a bit more than just covering the existing grade. And that's was kind of casting, side casting down the back a little bit. Um, so it's, you know, it is a little bit greater disturbance than what was there previously. Um, this is a screenshot from Google Street View from previous year.
Permission from the board to remove those trees. That was a long time ago and I'd have it right here. Um, so any trees or shrubs that were ever removed, we did get permission to do so. And they said that we can continue to maintain after that, which is all we've ever done. Um, we did put the gravel down, but nothing was removed and gravel.
Do you feel any of that slope back there?
Um, we tried very hard not to. There really wasn't anything that went over. Um, I, I believe somebody came out and looked at it. Uh, we put the wood borders and, um, we're going to plant the grasses along the edge behind it to try to keep anything from rolling over the edge. Um, but it's still all tree and we didn't remove anything, so nothing sort of fell over. It's just the street level. We were trying to be cohesive with our neighbor so that it was just aesthetically pleasing, but, um, yeah, nothing, nothing went over to disturb the.
Yeah, nothing, nothing went over to disturb the.
I think I'd be happy with an after the fact application.
What uh, what materials do you have?
This is just the, like, when you showed that old picture.
Is there a file number?
Uh, this is just an old permission from, I can check. Um, because I don't want you to think we took any trees down. Um. Want to see it?
Sure, I mean, I, if we have the files, I.
Yeah, I'm sure you did.
Uh, we have a file number, we can check again.
Okay, I'll, I'll look in this and give it, I can get right down after.
Okay, was it a notice of intent or, or request for determination?
Um, notice of intent.
NOI or RDA, do you see any of those letters on there? Is it an order of conditions? What's, what's the top thing?
It says um, determination of appli- application.
So there, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. And um. Again, I didn't want to remove any trees without permission, so they said it was okay. They continue to maintain as long as you don't remove any roots. And so forth. And. Again, we do plan on planting the grasses behind it to prevent anything from spilling over.
Is there a file number on the top right there?
Um.
Starts zero two eight with a number after.
Or your RDA wouldn't.
Oh, yeah, that's right. It would just be a four.
In the upper right hand corner.
Um, I don't see, I don't see a file number. I can get this to you.
A bullet pattern.
What?
Can we take a look, sir? Um. Move of six dead and fallen trees, clean up trash and debris on vacant lot.
Those were the trees that you showed from the picture. That was.
Fifteen ninety-nine.
Um, and when you're talking about planting the grass and stuff, is that? On this top surface or on the?
Um, right behind the wooden planks.
Okay.
Um, along the edge behind it.
That's, that's the area that's kind of.
Suggest something else, we're happy to do so.
Um. I mean, it's kind of a steeper slope back there. I think grass, you know, probably go past quickest. Um, you know, but having some additional stuff in there to kind of stabilize that slope. I don't know if the grass is gonna. Hold it.
Yeah. It's always been sort of a drop off.
Yeah. Um.
With after the fact RDA.
I'd be okay with that. Did you end up issuing a violation?
Uh, we sent, we sent out a letter. I'm not sure if it's uh. That maybe yesterday or the day before, so I'm not sure if it's issued yet, but um.
I would be fine with an after the fact RDA filing. If the other commissioners would, that J C just describes what, what work you did in addition to, or since this uh approval.
Okay.
What's, what's the new work?
And what? What's being proposed to stabilize that?
Yeah.
You know, the concern is just having, um, you know, obviously that all that soil right now, nothing holding it there.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so we've got a really good rainstorm. You could have a lot of that kind of erode. And it's all heading down into the resource, you know, towards the resource area there.
Okay, so what do you suggest?
Is there like a wall back there underneath the wood? Tading wall or anything?
There, there's, it's, it's mainly trees. There is um. Some wooden barriers that have been there for ages and. I don't know, I, you know, some, somewhat keeping it all together just because it's a sloped landscape and it always has been.
Yeah, I, I could, I mean, I think there would be some like sediment or soil that would, that could go through the wood in a rainstorm, we get washed through, so I don't know.
My neighbors are all the same. No, it's just the way the landscape is. And um.
I don't know if there's a way to put some sort of filter fabric.
Yeah.
Between that and uh, you know, the, the soil.
Help me to do so.
Yeah, I mean, if, for longevity, longevity of that. Parking area too, you know, not having it all erode. You're best fit.
Yes.
To maintain it, so. Um, yeah, I think, you know, filter fabric and then something behind that that can hold it in place.
Yeah.
Be a good idea.
In case in a way, you park there in a heavy rainstorm, you end up in the river.
Do you?
So.
Do you suggest a top dressing?
So, you know, wh- what they're suggesting with a filter fabric, establishing vegetation with a deep, you know, root structure may save your vehicle.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
That, but that's on, you know, that'd be on the slope portion.
Mm-hmm.
You know, up top, I think uh. I was mentioning bringing in some gravel.
Yeah.
Um. But that would keep. The stuff on the top from kind of walking out.
I, I, I think that's a good idea, yeah, because my um neighbor who is right adjacent to that has the gravel on top. So, and it keeps it in place, so absolutely.
Yeah, so again, again, the concern would be sediment washing out of there and, and.
Yeah.
Eventually making its way down to the river.
Okay.
But having the whole, the whole area is a resource area.
Mm-hmm.
Um. Yeah, this, that would be a concern. We don't want any erosion.
Yeah.
To come out uh from the bottom of this.
Okay, so we'll do that on the top and then put additional netting in the back. Grass.
Okay.
You, you know, the agent, look, you've filled out the.
Forms. So yeah, basically the same forms that you filled out for previously for this RDA.
Okay.
And then, but with, you know. Kind of a new plan where you're proposing to do for the rest of this work.
Okay.
Also, I guess, leaving what was already done.
Okay, so just um. Fill out another form and come back here.
Uh, yeah, we'll get you scheduled um. I think uh, you can get it into us. Uh, we can try to get it on the notice for the next meeting on the fifteenth. Able to get it just by the end of the week.
Ju- just to write down what we're going to do, not have it.
Yeah, and then, and then to fill out the form.
Yeah, okay, no problem.
Hey, any other commissioner comments?
For me.
I can get your email address at the end. I can kind of, I can send it to you.
You should keep this too.
Where's it on?
Thank you.
Hey, uh, last item is enforcement order twenty-four, zero, eight Whistlestop Way. Permanent clearing of vegetation and bordering vegetation, wetland and buffer zone. Anything on this?
I've reached out to them. I haven't heard anything back from them. Um, they were supposed to start replanting in September. But I, I've not started it now, you know.
Yeah, it was supposed to be plantings in the spring. And then they said that they wanted to do everything in the fall. Because it was just too wet in the spring. Um, and then they said it would be done September. It hasn't been done in September and we're in October. I am, so, so. Um. The check's in the mail.
I don't know.
Yeah, do you want to reach out to Mark and ask him if he has a plan? If we're gonna expect it this fall?
Yeah, I, that, that's I reached out asking him, but I haven't heard back from him yet.
Okay.
You know, it's, it's getting a little late to plant things and have them established. I mean, that, that's my concern.
Yeah.
Is he, he wanted to wait until he knew that they would be established. And now we're hitting past the growing season.
Yeah. I'll, I'll reach back out to him and then if I don't hear from them, I'll reach out to the owner. Get somebody to respond.
Maybe follow up your calls with sternly worded email.
All right.
Okay. The other. Is we ready to adjourn?
Will to Jared.
Okay.
We'll call member cook.
Oh, Jerry Byrne is racing.
Oh. You wanna speak to it?
Yeah, um, I was, I was on watching, but I couldn't get through. Um, but thank you very much.
Okay.
Are you, are you okay with the one-year extension?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you.
All right.
All right, we got a second. Uh, so we'll call member cook.
Yes.
Sergeant, yes, number Terry.
Yes.
And member Jackson.
Yeah.
And my last meeting.
Good job.
Night, everyone.